Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
Present Counsel Chakoudas.
Present.
Present Counsel Calucci.
Present.
Present Counsel Field.
Present.
Present Counsel Hogan.
Present.
Present Counsel Lapierre.
Present.
Present Counsel Lozey Abson, Counsel Net.
Present.
Present Counsel Staubert.
Present.
Present Counsel Walsh.
Present.
Present Counsel Sear.
Present. I'll rise for a moment of silence. I'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to Emilio Babuzzi, Donny Babuzzi's mom.
Mr. President, a special prayer for the Abadanian family and the Tyler family.
And Mr. President, another special prayers for the Robert McFaulan family and for William Hussey family.
President, for the Ladd family.
And also for the DiMillo family.
(inaudible) to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Except the minutes from December 17th and January 6th meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
And also January 14th meeting. Motion made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communications.
Of the following communications. The council reappoint Tia Cole, 5 Dagel Road, to the Public Arts Commission, effective immediately and expiring 1/28/2023. Reappoint Annette Sykes, 161 Lynchore Drive, to the Public Arts Commission, effective immediately and expiring 1/28/2021. Reappoint Carolyn Cole, 105 Maplewood Road, to the Public Arts Commission, effective immediately and expiring 1/28/2023. Reappoint Leah Warren, 14 Manson Street, to the Public Arts Commission, effective immediately and expiring 1/28/2022. Appoint Julie Kristen Barry, 42 Morton Hill Ave, to the Public Arts Commission, effective immediately and expiring 1/28/2021. Reappoint Christopher Rowe, 49 Horton Street, to the Traffic Commission, effective immediately and expiring 1/28/2022. Reappoint James Breenzo, 29 Herschel Street, to the Traffic Commission, effective immediately and expiring 1/28/2022.
So wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Hogan?
Yes, I had a motion to take off the table, North Common Street, 191.
From old business.
Old business.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. President and counsel. My name is Attorney Vincent Phelan. I represent the petitioner, Mr. Boris Kutt... Nick, I think I said that right. Basically, we're here for a special permit here this evening. The petitioner is a developer. He has developed properties all across the Commonwealth in the last few years, very similar projects, and they're very successful. I know in Roxbury and Cambridge and several other communities, he's done this, exactly what he's planning to do here. On the property at the North Common Street, he's looking to get a special permit. You have, it's a business zone, he's looking to get residential zoning for this at this point in time with a special permit. It's an adult daycare situated in the bottom floors. The two other floors, on second and third floor, are vacant at this point in time. They used to be medical offices. And so what he's looking to do is put eight and eight units of residential housing in these particular floors. And we all know that housing right now in the city of Lynn is a priority. We need to have it here at this time. Parking's an issue in this area, there's no question about that, but we've submitted a parking plan. The petitioner owns parking around the corner. So he has drawn up and had a parking plan initiated, which will absolutely accommodate any of the tenants that are there. We have spoken with the Ward Council. We don't know of any neighborhood opposition to this. We've spoken to the prior Ward Council and the state representative, who have voiced, I don't believe, any opposition to this. We have some other plans here for you this evening, if you need to see those, but we ask that you grant a special permit.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? You can sit down, Counselor. If they have questions, I'll ask you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Hogan?
Yes, I'm toward the facility today. Actually, as I was converting, like you said, offices into a couple, eight apartments on each unit. And I also toured where they will be using parking. He has said that they will line the parking, so there'll be a sign, so then there won't be on-street parking. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Oh, Mr. President, it's discussion. Yeah, I'd just like to ask Attorney Phelan, how many bedrooms are in these units?
The majority of these would be one bedrooms and a few two bedrooms.
I didn't hear.
The majority will be one bedrooms and a few two bedrooms.
That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey Abson? Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sear?
Yes. No other public hearings. Going to have a presentation from the Lynn Transit Action Plan Group.
Good evening, counselors. Thanks for having me. My name is Alexandra Markievich. I'm here from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Office of Transportation Planning, working closely with the MBTA on the Lynn Transit Action Plan. So tonight, just wanted to give you an update of the project that we're working on, especially because we're at a critical point where we're thinking about consolidating and solidifying the recommendations that we're have. So we want to get your input at this point in the process. So I'll just go over what the Transit Action Plan is, some of the stakeholder outreach and public outreach we've done so far, and what we've learned about the existing conditions in terms of public transportation, and to give you an overview of the strategies that we're considering and thinking about documenting in this plan, and then talk about next steps. For a little bit of context, the Lynn Transit Action Plan, you might be wondering, why is MassDOT working on this? Where does this come from? This came out of Focus 40, which was the, is the MBTA's investment plan for the next 20 years. And the plan was designed around identifying priority places rather than projects so much. And Lynn is one of those places. These are areas in the region where there's a lot of ingredients for better public transportation. There's density, there's a lot of folks that rely on public transportation, or there's a lot of jobs, but for whatever reason, or for different reasons, don't have the quality of service that they could benefit from. And so we're undergoing these Transit Action Plans to identify what are some things that we can do in the short, medium, and long term to really mitigate that. So the purpose of the plan is to really identify what are some ways in which we can look across the modes, think really about what are the needs for folks traveling on public transportation? How can we make it faster, more reliable, and better matched to where they need to go, whether that be within Lynn, the North Shore, or to Boston? And I think looking at that really serves a greater purpose about, in thinking about economic development and growth and mobility across the region. We have an advisory committee that we've been working with, which consists of, Counsel Hogan is on it, as well as members of the legislature, Mayor McGee, and other local stakeholders. And we've met with them two times so far. Our third meeting is Friday. You guys are welcome to sit in on that. We put together with the advisory committee identified goals for this project, so we want to make sure that anything that we're looking at in terms of an actual infrastructure improvement or improvement to public transportation speaks to equity, economic development, and environment. So those help measure our success. In terms of schedule, we are about two-thirds of the way through this process. So we began in June, that was when our first advisory committee meeting was. The first two-thirds of our process has really been looking at those existing conditions. Where does the bus experience delay? What's ridership like? What are the needs more generally for people traveling? And how can we get them onto public transportation as a better option? What is the, how, what is the situation with the commuter rail, et cetera? And we've been distilling that now into actual improvement strategies, and that's what I'd like to go over with you guys tonight, to get your feedback at this point. We'll spend the next couple months refining those ideas, talking to the members of the public, and then solidifying our plan. So far, though, we have had a chance to talk to a lot of folks in Lynn, a lot of different stakeholders. In addition to robust data analysis, we really wanted to get a sense from folks, what are the challenges? What are some of the problems? What we heard is there's a desire for short-term, you know, immediate change, especially given the state of traffic congestion and some of those challenges. There's also a lot of needs that we hear from community of older adults, as well as students who use the bus a lot to get to different locations, like hospitals, malls, the airport, job centers. In general, there's a lack of knowledge of some of the options. Some folks don't know that the commuter rail is there and could be an option for getting into Boston or getting up to Salem if they choose to do so. So those are just some of the things that we were finding from talking to folks, as well as some nitty-gritty on kind of issues that hold up the bus. We also did, though, a pretty big survey. We reached 1,000 people with a survey in November, in the fall. You may have seen it, hopefully, or, I don't know, it got out to 1,000 people, so it got out somehow. But in that survey, we asked people, you know, do they use public transportation? Do they not use it? If so, why? What would they like to see in public transportation that would really get them on board, thinking about that as an option for going to work or making all their other trips? What we heard is a lot of riders really, really value both frequency, so how can we increase frequency, and then also, how can we have a more reliable service? It really gets me where I need to go, when I need to get there. A lot of folks who don't use the T as much, the bus or rail, I think have more concerns about expanding where the service gets them, and that makes sense because obviously it's not getting them where they need to go now. Some of the other key takeaways from the analysis we did on existing conditions is that, on the one hand, a lot of folks, when they're traveling around the region, both, you know, on public transportation or just in cars or by other means, are really making a lot of trips locally. Folks working in Salem or in Peabody or needing to get there for different reasons. But at the same time, we recognize from our stakeholders and other studies that the connection to Boston's really critical for job connectivity and economic development. So how can we think about solutions for both of those needs? In terms of commuter rail specifically, what we found was that the garage has a lot of capacity, there's, it doesn't fill up, but at the same time, as you might have heard from some of your constituents, there is limited capacity on the trains themselves during the peak period, so it's really hard to get on. And so that's a challenge that, you know, we might kind of try to find some solutions to. In terms of bus service, the buses generally access the places that people are needing to get to, the malls, Salem, et cetera, job center on Route 1. But the frequency might not meet the demand for off-peak, kind of that middle-of-the-day travel window, when a lot of people need to be moving around, and the buses are stuck in traffic. So that's a little bit of an overview of what we've learned, and I'll go through some of the ideas that we want to float for improvement strategies that we can document in this plan, and then also advance and work, move forward on. Just start pulling it back to that goal slide. How can we translate the goals of equity, economy, and environment into tangible improvements? Those might come with measures like increasing the use of transit walking and biking, or increase, reducing travel time, or increasing access to get to Boston or other job centers on the North Shore, focusing on that moving people rather than vehicles, which is something our secretary and the governor really have talked about. So this is a potential way we could frame the different ideas that we're looking at. To get into some specifics, the MBTA, and I personally am also, is separately working on a project called Rail Vision, which has looked at the entire commuter rail network and understood how we can run service differently, how we can change frequency, change the technology, like using electric vehicles, to better meet the needs of the region. And this specifically would affect service on the Newbury Port Rock Port Line and Lynn. And we're at the end of that process, when we presented the results to our Board, the Fiscal Management and Control Board, in November, they endorsed a future rail system that does have higher frequency, is electrified, and has improved access. And they specifically called out the Newbury Port Rock Port Line is a really good place, among a few other options, to start phasing in that type of transformation. So although it's not directly in my team for Lynn Transit Action Plan, we are actively working, you know, with the rail team on thinking about that, the next steps for increasing frequency electrification, and even potentially adding a stop at Wonderland, which would provide that Blue Line connectivity. On a slightly different track, the MBTA is also actively thinking about the station itself, so they are procuring, in the final stages, are procuring a consultant contract to rehabilitate the stage, the station and garage. And so, you know, that's maybe not a huge increase in frequency or electrification as big, massive of a scale as that project, is what the Rail Vision's contemplating, but it's something that would benefit all, you know, everyday riders who are using the system today, and be more inviting for folks in the future. And then the MBTA is also ongoing a study of the fare zones, which I know is an issue of great concern to folks in Lynn, and that will be released to the legislature on March 15th. So all of that work is happening, and we're going to use this Lynn Transit Action Plan to document that and translate that into how that would affect mobility for folks in Lynn. And a bunch of other things are happening besides looking at the commuter rail. So we are working actively to redesign the entire bus network, and this would certainly affect routes that reach Lynn and go throughout the North Shore. Senator Crichton put an amendment into the budget last summer for a feasibility study specifically looking at Blue Line. And MassDOT's been working closely with the city on procuring a ferry, so what we're going to do on the Lynn Transit Action Plan side is conduct a market analysis, looking at service opportunities for Seaport and other, and Boston more generally, for that ferry, potential ferry service. So those are a lot of things that are happening and that we're trying to coordinate and filter into this plan, but that are really in larger processes that are ongoing throughout the MBTA. The other thing that we want to do through this plan is work with our team to think about what are some things that we could put on the ground, you know, right now? And one of those things is bus lanes. And so these are essentially a tool that's been used throughout the region, that is one of the quickest ways to really see improving service for folks who are riding the system today, and attract, an opportunity to attract new riders. They're quick because they're really low-cost and, as compared to some of those other more major infrastructure projects, and they're a little bit easier to implement. The benefit of them is that they improve your travel time and reliability, and they can even improve the situation for folks driving. I think we were talking to someone earlier who's saying, you know, the experience is when the bus is completely in a separate lane from folks driving, that reduces that conflict between those vehicles, potential conflict of slowing and stopping, et cetera. And then obviously, they're really going to reduce travel time for folks getting to work, getting to where they need to go on the bus. They do sometimes kind of comment at the exchange of space that's previously been dedicated for parking, but we're finding that the way they work best is when there are cases where, you know, the part, the opportunities for parking are available on adjacent streets, and we're able to match and make sure that, you know, based on data collection, that those spaces really are available. As I mentioned, these have been popping up across the region. The T's been working closely with different municipalities to implement them. These are just two of a number of examples. In Everett, that was, I think, one of the first ones. Each bus ride, each bus rider is saving eight to 10 minutes on their commute as a result of this bus lane. In Boston, you know, similar time savings, and they're trying all-day facilities, as well as several other places are. So in terms of the nuts and bolts, to actually implement one of these, you need to find the dedicated space, and so that's where you might be looking towards, where is there opportunity to consolidate parking, or where's there general traffic lane that we can use for this? Or you might need to modify, you know, the curbs, but all of that design and implementation is supported and a cooperative effort with the T, and, you know, we're here to support on that. And of course, there would, is public engagement and outreach throughout this process to make sure everyone, you know, feels, feels good about it. Yeah. So I'll go through the couple that we are looking at as primary candidates. This was due to the levels of ridership and delay that they're experiencing. So one is a one-mile segment where we're finding you could potentially save up to 12 minutes, really improving speed and reliability, the segment from the Market Basket through, to the Bridge. This is a corridor where there's high bus ridership. There's, a lot of folks that are on the road are in buses, so there's a high kind of person throughput of buses, and it could be a really good opportunity. We found from some initial data collection, you know, that it does appear that the, there is a lot of parking available off-street or on-side streets, and there are some large segments of this that don't even have parking. So it could be a good opportunity. Similar on the Commons. So we're looking at how we can integrate what we're thinking about in terms of bus lanes with, oops, skipped ahead, with the Northern Strand Project, which you guys might be familiar with. So how can this be kind of yet another transportation option on that corridor and could potentially connect, you know, City Hall with a potential Western Ave corridor? And the third one we're looking at is the Linway. So this is one where the Linway is really providing that critical connection to Wonderland. A lot of folks are accessing the Blue Line from bus service, starting at Central Square. And if this could become this really kind of high-quality facility for buses, it would, it provides the opportunity to really get ahead of a lot of the development that we know is in the pipeline there, and provide that really strong transit solution for folks before that area becomes more densified with housing. So it's a, it's a really unique opportunity. There's not the same kind of parking lane, so this would be looking at providing a center running lane, which is kind of like the Green Line, if you've ever seen in Boston, or I think we had a picture of a center-running concept. That, a center-running concept looks kind of like, this is another example of one, where it's that facility running down the middle of the roadway, and it could be really beautifying the space, too. So that's all I have right now in terms of what we're looking at. I'd love to hear your feedback as we think about moving forward and next steps. What our next steps are, are to have a public meeting on February 11th, as well as our advisory committee meeting this Friday, and then continue doing public outreach and refining design for these bus concepts, as well as advancing the analysis for ferry service, which we'll document in the plan, as well, and working with the Rail Vision and Bus Network redesign teams to integrate what they're working on into this planning effort as well. So we have a really nice kind of short and medium-long-term picture to document there. So I'll, I'll stop there and happy to take questions.
Any of the councils have any questions?
I just had a question around, a general question, it probably always comes up, but within the confines of the budget, this is state-funded, do you have anticipated if it's going to be discussed in this year's budget or going forward, or how does that work?
In terms of what in particular?
Everything that you've outlined here, the costs, total cost, where we're heading.
So I think a lot of the funding sources would be varied. For some of the bus concepts, a lot of that's been done in coordination with the MBTA. They have some funding available for implementation of that, and then also, you know, working with cities, working with their public works, but I think, yeah, that's on the bus lane.
Eric Berkman from MBTA. We have about $10 million available for doing bus lanes, and we have more money on the way, so we're trying to kind of spread that out around the region. And we, you know, once we go through the public process, we're on a pretty accelerated timeline because we know that these bus riders are experiencing a lot of congestion in order to get cars off the road, so that people who don't want to use the bus have a little bit of a better journey, and the bus riders have a better journey. We need to deliver the projects quickly, so, you know, some of the projects that we've done in Boston from...
Excuse me, could you go up to the microphone, please?
Yeah. And I also want to address some of the other, the funding pots for the other projects, too, because I know that's important, but yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to start...
Eric is also a director at the Transportation Department. He didn't introduce himself, but I'm...
Thanks. Yeah.
Listening audience.
Yeah, yes. Sorry, everyone who's listening who didn't hear me before. My name's Eric Berkman. I'm the Director of Transit Priority for the MBTA. Transit priority is bus lanes, special signals, queue jumps, all the different things that help us move our vehicles through the streets faster, which also includes Green Line vehicles, Green Line signaling, where it's sharing right-of-way and it's above ground. So what I was saying is that our funding sources, that we have about $10 million right now available to do bus lanes, and we're always seeking out additional funding sources, so we're able to, pretty much, a lot of these projects, we can fully fund them as the T, and they include curb work and bus lane design and everything. And they're also on an accelerated timeline often. So when the city, when we're through the community stakeholder process, the public engagement process, when the city agrees that it's the approach they want to take, where it's a city-owned road, we can often deliver the projects within a year, sometimes as quickly as six or nine months.
And then for some of the other items that we discussed, the city of Lynn has a FTA grant for procurement of a ferry, and so I know that the RFP for that procurement is out and closes in February. And then there's still discussions about the operating, how, the operations for a service there. And then Rail Vision, those discussions have just begun about funding. However, the station and garage rehabilitation is something that I can check on the details of, but I know is a project that's actively moving.
And it doesn't, it doesn't conflict with the other MassDOT monies that we got for the three big intersections that were going to be, the Janus Broadway, the East and Western, and, okay.
No, I don't believe that these sincere, these are MBTA efforts are not kind of...
Different.
All right, Hunter, you just come to the podium.
Oh.
Sorry, Hunter, resident. Question for you. As part of the plan, will there be guidance for the city on how to procure the funding for the bus program? Because I think there's a, probably, there will be interest in doing something like that, but thinking about support and guidance for the city on actually how to carry through, you know, the grants or whatever through your office, that's one point. And the second point, follow-up to that, I imagine that there'll be a lot of benefits thinking about this regionally. So, you know, Lynn, obviously, the 442 goes through Lynn, but then it hits Revere, and then you hit the congestion.
Yeah, that's a great point.
And you could make a great case for, you know, the corridor itself, not just within Lynn. So is there an opportunity for Lynn to partner with Revere or something like that?
Yeah, that's a great point. I'll take the second question first. I think, you know, we, since this is, you know, Lynn City Council, we wanted to focus on that section for this discussion, but you're certainly right, there is delay going all the way to Wonderland, so I think it's a good time to start bringing Revere into that conversation. They've been in attendance at our advisory committee meetings, but certainly continuing to bring them closer in. And then we can definitely talk about implementation and funding sources in the plan.
Go ahead, Megan, why don't you just come up to the... Thanks.
Sure. Megan Hamel, the Mayor's Chief of Staff. I just wanted to piggyback on that. From the mayor's perspective, we have a closely relationship with the mayor and Rivera and his office, and we have started to have those conversations around transportation in general, but specifically around that, because if we have a dedicated bus lane that goes to Revere and then just ends, for example, is that really productive? And so continuing that, that conversation, so we are thinking about that.
It's, yeah, really exciting, because that would be a great corridor.
Counsel Staubert?
Thank you. Will you be working with World Tech as far as the improvements that are going to be made from Buchanan Bridge to Market Basket on 107, and like Counsel Lapierre brought up, and the Essex Street stretch there?
Yeah, I think we've had, we have the contact information for Rich Benavidez, World Tech, and can coordinate once we get to that. You know, we're just at the concept level right now, but once we're actually thinking about 30% design, further design and implementation, we'll certainly make sure that nothing we do is in conflict for, with what he's, what they're looking at.
Right, but any improvements that you want to make along that bus corridor, that would, would be the time?
Yes, yeah. No, that's a great point, and something that, I think, you know, that's in the tip for a couple of years out, I believe. And this is something, you know, that we could even probably do sooner, since it's a pretty straightforward effort, but then that project would be a way to, like, solidify it, if it was working well.
And is, is part of your, your plan to speed up service by consolidating bus stops?
That's certainly something that could also help travel time, and that's something that we could, we've thought about integrating as we're starting to talk to folks about it. That's definitely a way to get an added travel time savings, but I know it's also a sensitive topic. So we're, as we start talking to folks, I think we're going to start having those conversations.
I mean, I see it as how, in the morning, going to work, driving down Western Ave, and it's just the bus. It's almost like every 150 yards, they're pulling over.
Yeah, so I think when we're doing these types of projects, it's a great time to think about how to most efficiently have bus stops so that they're accessible for people, it's not too far in between, but also not too close where you're constantly stopping and your ride's going to be pretty slow. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Glad you guys are open.
Thank you, Mr. President. Question, two of the proposed bus lane routes end right at the Saugus River, at two structures, two bridges, really. One, the General Edwards Bridge, that needs some significant repairs, and one, that bridge that we've been waiting to have replaced for a couple of decades now. Is this part of the process, too, to not just bottleneck it right there at those two structures?
Yeah, we are, we're in communication with Highway on how we can coordinate entrance onto the bridges. I think in terms of the Belt and Bly, the roadway segment after the bridge does not, it does not seem to experience as much congestion as Western Ave, so, but I think that would be a good next step, to really start thinking about how to integrate with getting onto the bridge, and then the segments after the bridge, just like what our comments around, Megan, were stating, especially, you know, on that 1A portion. So we're working with Highway on that.
Councilor Hogan.
Yes, our three proposed bus lanes, all in Ward 6. I can tell you, the Commons, for one, the off-street parking off the Commons is already an issue with Shepherd Street, Husk Court, and Commercial Street. So if you took away the parking on the Commons itself, that would cause major problems. And the Western Ave corridor, there's a lot of businesses that rely on the parking, and they need that parking for their businesses, to keep their businesses going, so I know that I've been dealing with issues in the ward for that already. On the Linway, obviously, there's no parking on the Linway anyway, so it's probably the best of the three, but I know I'll be at the meeting Friday, so we'll actually talk about it more about it. So I just want to make, make that a...
Yeah, I think that that's a great point. I think we're, we're excited to get out there and collect the data to see where are some ways that we can find solutions for everyone in this. So thinking about off-street parking or side streets, looking at that availability throughout the day, and seeing where the opportunities are, but I know that that's a, going to be a conversation, a trust-building exercise with folks. In terms of businesses as well, I think we're, we're happy to meet with them and talk to them about kind of what we've seen as the impacts for businesses. I think one way to think about it is also that a lot of folks going to businesses are coming by foot or on bus. And so I know that, you know, parking right out front is, is definitely something that's helpful for some people, but potentially a lot more folks than people realize are, are actually coming to businesses on the bus and on foot, and so elevating those modes can also generate more people stopping into businesses as well, so...
Yeah, I know on the Western Ave section of the ward, we do already have people parking on off-streets and jumping on the bus and leaving their cars there all day, so that's part of the issues that we're dealing with right now, as, as we speak, so...
Okay.
All right, definitely, we'll talk more.
Yeah, looking forward to that.
Any other questions? Want to thank Alexandra and Eric for coming tonight. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I'll just...
Public hearings to be set down.
We have the petition of George Benitez, owner of JB's Barbershop Studio, for a coin-operated device license for one pool table at 98 Union Street. Petition of Tree Market LLC for a marijuana retailer to open, operate at 212 Broad Street. Petition of National Grid for a grant of location at 42-44 Grand View Ave, and a petition of National Grid for a grant of location at West Baltimore Street.
It's the motion of the council.
Let them down, please.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Field.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey Abson, Councilor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Staubin.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sear.
Yes. Well, we do the committee reports, I just want to report that the Ways and Means approved over $106,000 tonight in grants, that's about, so far this year alone, $1.2 million a share. So let's, just to let all of the people out there know that that's what we do, we, we do have grant writers, and we do bring in a lot of money into the city. Ways and Means, Councilor Net.
Yes, Mr. President, all voted by the committee to approve and make a motion to accept.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, with the clerk read all the transfers.
We have the transfers that were laid over from January 14. Transfer the sum of $19,972 from the account of reserve expense to the account of Essex Tech expense to fund additional students attending Essex Tech. Transfer the sum of $219.10 from the account of Lynn Fire expense, the account of Lynn Fire prior year bill expense to fund a bill from that prior year. Transfer the sum of $1,897.50 from the account of Lynn Fire expense to the account of Lynn Fire prior year bill expense to fund a bill from the prior year. Transfer the sum of $220 from the account of Parking Department expense to the account of the Parking Department prior year bill expense to fund a prior year bill. Transfer the sum of $400 from the account of the Mayor expense to the account of prior year bill expense to fund a prior year bill. Transfer the sum of $5,000 from the account of State Election expense to the account of State Election overtime to fund additional hours for election activity.
Motion made.
Do you want to continue with the grants, sorry?
Yeah, you can do all the grants, though.
Okay. We have certifies an available fund, the amount of $30,823 is allotted to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY2020 Sustained Traffic Enforcement and Education Grant. Certifies an available fund, the amount of $25,600 is allotted to the City of Lynn Fire Department by the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, FY19 Emergency Management Performance Grant, which requires the city to match dollar for dollar. Certifies an available fund, the amount of $25,000 is allotted to the City of Lynn Downtown Cultural Arts District by the Massachusetts Marketing Partnership from the FY20 Massachusetts State EMOC to enhance the Lynn Cultural District in the City of Lynn. Certifies an available fund, the amount of $25,000 is allotted to the City of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FY20239 PCHP Expansion Grant. And finally, we have the election warrant. Order that the city clerk be directed to cause notice to be advertised that meetings of the qualified voters of the City of Lynn will be held in several polling places designated for the presidential primary to be held on March 3, 2020. Polls will be opened at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. All citizens will, in the several precincts in which they are entitled to vote between said hours, give their votes on one presidential preference, state committee man, state committee woman, and ward committee. The ward and precinct locations are Ward 1-1, Shoemaker School; Ward 1-2, Pondview Lodge; Ward 1-3 and 4, Sisson School; Ward 2 All, St. Pius Low Church; Ward 3 All, Marshall Middle School; Ward 4 All, Harrington; Ward 5, Lynn Tech; Ward 6, Lynn Tech Field House; Ward 7, Breed Junior High. Early voting will also take place in City Hall during regular business hours from February 24th to the 28th.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Field.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey Abson, Councilor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Staubin.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sear.
Yes. Licensing, Councilor Field.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. We have a unanimous vote by the committee, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public property and parks, Councilor Staubin.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item on the agenda, to allow the organizers of the July 3 Frederick Douglass High Rock event to place signage on city-owned property at the base of High Rock Park on Essex Street, beginning two weeks prior to the event. Unanimous vote of the committee, motion approved.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any new business? Already did that. Any old business?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made to adjourn, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.